That's what I say a lot.
I was on the jan.
I was like fifteen.
Do you have the laptop?
Yeah.
Okay, this is good for us.
I really.
I'm delighted.
This is water.
Okay, everybody ready? Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Directors of Tacoma Public Schools, business meeting, Thursday, June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, to order. And would everyone please rise and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with infinite justice, all. Thank you. The Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage on their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. General Counsel True Blood, would you mind call the roll, please?
Yes, good evening. President Bonbright.
Here.
Vice President Keating.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director Strozier.
Here.
We have a quorum, and I think we we're all our student representatives. That was your last time.
I know. I think they're busy.
Yeah.
All right. Well, awesome. Well, thank you. All right. Moving on to item five, adoption of the agenda. Does someone want to move the agenda?
I moved it up.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Director Strozier. Anyone have any additions or changes, revisions to the agenda? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Item six, recognition of staff, students, and community. Item six point one, civil observances. Six point one A.
Yes, the district.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. The district's general counsel recommends that the Board of Directors recognize the following state or federal civic observances that directly align with the district's strategic plan.
Six point one A, LGBTQIA+ Pride Month.
Yes, we are excited to support LGBTQIA Pride Month here at the city. Tacoma Public Schools, the city of Tacoma has also recognized LGBTQ Month, as it's called in RCW forty-three, one fourteen oh seven oh. We added the IA and plus in an effort to be inclusive, and the legislature has declared Pride Month. And one of the things I like about the law is it says that educational institutions, public entities, and private organizations are encouraged to designate time for appropriate activities in commemoration of the lives, history, achievements, and contributions of LGBTQ people.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board want to comment? Vice President Keating.
I do. So first, pack and pride. Pride began as an act of protest against police brutality, oppression, and discrimination over fifty years ago. It began with the leadership of trans women of color.
Mike.
My greatest mentors in beginning to understand intersectionality have been Black, Brown, Indigenous, queer folk. As a student and young person growing up in Tacoma Public Schools, no one openly looked like me. Once I was in high school, I began to recognize. Thank you. Oh, that's on now. Thank you. As a student and young person growing up in Tacoma Public Schools, no one openly looked like me. Once I was in high school, I began to recognize the shadows some of my mentors and teachers were forced to live under. I was a queer kid in the nineteen seventies and eighties. I knew without question that I could not see tremendous progress since then, progress that is continually pursued and fought for today. Right now, we have adults banning LGBTQ books, trying to limit access to GSA clubs, restricting access to information, and censoring educators. This is not just in states outside of Washington. This is happening nearby and around our state. What I mostly want to focus on walking through life tenaciously bold and true to oneself is a defiant many, many years to fully come to myself. The audacious ownership of being and expressing all of who we are is something I see our students do every single day. They are not seeking permission. They are stretching the world into a place where they can stake a claim. To our LGBTQ staff, this acknowledgement is also for you. Maybe you and I didn't have the school environment we needed growing up. We can ensure and help continue to create it for each LGBTQIA student today. To all of our LGBTQI students, staff, and families, happy pride.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Item six point one point B, Juneteenth.
Yes, Juneteenth. It not only marks a specific event on a specific date, June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, it's also a celebration. On that date, two months after the Confederate Army surrendered and more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, a Union general accompanied nearly two thousand soldiers. He arrived in Galveston, Texas, and read what is known as General Orders Number Three, officially informing enslaved people of their freedom. Ever since, communities have been celebrating Juneteenth with events ranging from family get-togethers to large concerts, festivals, and parades. And last year, President Biden signed into law making Juneteenth a national holiday, as well as our own Washington State Legislature recognizing Juneteenth. And this is exciting that this is the first year that Tacoma Public Schools is also recognizing Juneteenth.
Does anyone else have any comments about Juneteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here in Tacoma, at Wright Park, they do a Juneteenth celebration. They've been doing annually. It'll be on Saturday at eleven a.m. at Wright Park. And then in Puyallup, there's another event for Juneteenth hosted by the Two Way Racial Healing Project. And they've been coordinating with their school board out there in Puyallup and just talking on issues that matter to Black students and getting youth voice involved. And the people hosting in Tacoma are also really vested in the community. Some of them are former TPS staff, and they're pretty cool people. So if you want to celebrate, but you don't know how, tap in with people who know how, and they're doing it at Wright Park.
Perfect. Thank you. Moving on, item seven, Superintendent.
Just real quickly, Madam President, if I might, I just want to thank the board. You know, this has been a journey about which days do we recognize, how do we recognize them? And it's important for all of us to take a moment to recognize the dates that are not only recognized by law but are important to our community. And so on behalf of the staff, thank you for your leadership. This isn't always how it's been, but it does give us a moment to pause, to acknowledge. And by no means have we arrived, but it also gives us energy to keep on moving forward to accomplish what we want to ultimately be. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Superintendent's report.
We have three exciting and diverse topics for you tonight. The first is I'd like to ask Ms. Alicia Lauber to step up, and she is going to take us through a little bit of a journey regarding Galt Middle School property. And we are in the process of selling it potentially or exploring that. And so we've asked Ms. Lauber to come up and share with you and the public where are we at in that process.
Good eve. Is it on?
Yes, it's on.
Good evening, and I am happy to be here to provide an update on the RFP process to find a buyer to purchase and develop the former Galt Middle School campus. As many of us are aware, the former Galt Middle School has sat empty since it was closed in two thousand nine. While the Metro Parks Pool on the site continued to operate there until fall of two thousand and eighteen, it also closed when the East Side Community Center opened. Over the last several years, there have been several efforts to sell the site or transfer parcels to other organizations, but they did not end with a solution. And so in April, the district released an RFP to provide a transparent way to allow interested buyers to present their proposals to us and tell us what they can do, whether they are public, private, or nonprofit, with a caveat that the project must include the reuse of the original nineteen twenty-six structure, which is considered historic. The remainder of the structures on the site outside of that nineteen twenty-six structure are in the midst of being demolished. That two have been demolished already, and two more will be demolished later this month. So the intent is to try to find a project that will bring life back to the neighborhood, as well as find a use for that historic building and bring it back to life. Currently, we are reviewing the three proposals that were submitted and are inviting the public to review the proposed use and community benefit portions of the developers' proposals. These are posted and available for download on the website at tacomschools.org/galt. There's also a comment form there where we're inviting people to share what excites them about the proposals, as well as maybe any concerns that they have so that we can bring those so that we can gather that information as we're considering which proposal to move forward with. Sorry. Each proposal is a little bit different with each of the proposals we have received. Each of the proposals we have received includes a different form of housing included in it, but there is also some defining elements when it comes to reuse of the original building. One developer plans to list it on the National Register of Historic Places and Tacoma Historic Register and turn the building into housing as part of an urban infill project that includes a small retail center and pedestrian amenities. Another developer proposes turning the main building into a community center, developed through an engagement process similar to the Youngstown Cultural Arts Center in Seattle and working with a community land trust. And a third developer proposes donating the main building to a church that would restore the space for church, as well as nonprofit and community uses. We're really encouraging people to go online and check out that proposed use of those sites and let us know because that will be a significant portion of how we score these RFPs when it comes to that community benefit. But we'll also be looking at experience and qualifications, as well as finances and feasibility, because ultimately we want to make sure whatever project we select to move forward is one that can work because it's important for us, again, bring that building, bring that part of the community back to life. Next week, we're going to be having several Zoom meetings available to the public to ask questions about the process and next steps and provide any feedback there. And again, be able to articulate the need for them to submit those comments through the form on the website. Our goal is to bring you back, or our goal is to make a recommendation. By June thirtieth, we would announce that, and there'd be a public process in which, again, the public would be invited to make comments, and we would bring that developer in to a public forum to answer questions about that specific project. And then with the idea of bringing that to the board on the fourteenth for both the public hearing and consideration. And if at that time, you grant us permission to start negotiating, August would be spent negotiating a purchase and sale agreement with the developer that would outline a lot of the deliverables that each side needs to complete during the feasibility period, as well as milestones along the way that would also involve more community updates and involvement. So I know I've heard from some people that are afraid that after her next week or the week after, they're not going to have any more chance of her input, and there won't be any more updates. But we're definitely making sure that the community's voice is heard along the way, as well as they're getting updated along the way. Because when it comes to the feasibility period, as we go through and again, work with the city, work with the developer, make sure everything is possible, complete some responsibilities of our own, the idea is to bring something forward that is feasible and is going to happen and is good for the community. So with that, it might take a few months during that period, and I know we're all super eager to get to those next steps, but we want to make sure that we are going at the right speed and not too fast, but not too slow, because we want to make sure that we bring life back. So I'm excited to update you and come back over the next coming weeks and months, and hopefully we will be seeing a solution and years from now look back and say, wow, I can't believe that happened. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Alicia. And I just, I want to personally, on behalf of the entire board, thank you for your tireless and seemingly endless work on this project for many, many years now. So thank you so much for everything you're doing. And I know you work hard to make sure the public has input. And I know personally and have watched you reach out to public and when I send them to you or I, you know, however, and that you are very diligent about that. So thank you for that. We all appreciate your openness and the extra work you've put in. Thank you. Any other thoughts?
The website, it was tacomschools.org/galt, and then that's also where they'd be able to find out like when the Zoom meetings are and things like that.
The Zoom meeting dates and times are there, the links are there, the proposals are there for download, and the online comment form is there, as well as different information about the process and what we're up to.
Thank you. That's the question I get all the time. So I'm really grateful. It's in one place. Thank you for your work.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Superintendent.
I just would like to echo your comments, and Ms. Lauber is leaving. Ms. Lauber's portfolio is pretty expansive, and she's deeply committed to Tacoma and this community. And so please, if you have questions, reach out. She is, by simply stated, very much an expert in a very complex, nuanced situation. Our desire is to help our community with this process. Excuse me. But we would not be here without her leadership, so I wanted to also echo that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, item seven point two, budget process update.
Tonight, we have Ms. Kristen Bell here to join us, our Director of Budget, and she is going to give us an update a little bit about our process. We are not adopting a budget tonight. I just want to remind everyone of that, and that is great, and we are right on track. But we thought it would be very important for you to get a kind of a status update of where we are.
Good evening. Okay, so tonight I'm just going to do a quick overview, as Superintendent Garcia mentioned, of just the budget process development and where we're at. This slide basically just kind of shows the next steps over the next month or so of the highlights of what you'll be seeing from a communication standpoint and budget development. So after tonight's meeting on June twenty-third, Ms. Medina is going to provide you with a budget update. We'll have a little bit more detail relative to high-level changes of revenues and expenditures, where we're seeing those variances. And then on the twenty-eighth of June, we plan to release a formal, a recorded, rather, video presentation of a budget presentation for the community. And then on the tenth of July, we'll submit our draft budget to the ESD, which is required by RCW for us to do that by that date. And then on July fourteenth, we'll provide a formal budget hearing, which will have all the bells and whistles of the budget for you to talk about and discuss. And then on the eleventh of August, a formal recommendation for an adoption. This slide, many of you have seen before. It's just a review of our annual budget process. And I just want to kind of point out on the left-hand side there, to point out that the twenty-two, twenty-three budget development cycle is a review year, and that is where we do minimal programming adjustments. We do look at drivers from the legislature, which we have to do every year, changes there. But it's more of a review year rather than big programming changes, which will be in the, when we start to build the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, that'll be next year. So this is one of the off-cycle.
And Ms. Bell, just to echo your comments, it's important for the public to also understand why do we do that? So the legislator doesn't complete a full budget in its review years. So the legislation is built off a two-year budget cycle. And so a number of years ago, we studied different models, and we really worked to make sure that we were in a place where we were able to be nimble and adjust and enhance, but we'd also have an opportunity for sustainable implementation. And so those full-cycle years, that's where there is a lot of community, staff, input, proposals, rank review of those proposals. But those proposals are designed to be two years in nature. And so just want to echo why that review year is so important. It is an adjustment. And then come, starting again, right around the corner, we will be entering the full review cycle.
Right. Thank you. That's about, I'm thinking probably November, we're going to start kicking off next year's budget with that cycle, because that is a pretty beefy project, but it's really meaningful, and we get a lot of value in that. So that's coming soon also. This is just a high-level map of the timeline and the highlights of all the various things that happen in our budget development, from government, governor's budget kicking off in December, all the way up to where we're at now. And ultimately, we do have a required deadline of August thirty-first for adoption. We're slotted for August eleventh, so we have plenty of time to be in compliance with that. But that's just kind of where we're at, or the different things that we have to do for that cycle. Here's more of where we're at. It's kind of color-coded for the various areas. You can see that we're green for the majority of things, but the yellow area I want to just bring to your attention. So the budget interactive tool, though we slotted here that we were going to put it out beginning in March, as we went through, due to the fact that we are in a review year, we just, we didn't have a lot of changes to share. And so we're really just responding to the legislative impacts and the flexes with the just different driver rates and things like that. So what we do plan on doing is, on that June twenty-eighth release of that recorded presentation, we will be also launching that budget calculator interactive tool on that date also. So that will be the twenty-eighth of June. And then just to remind all of you about the board's role in the budget development. Again, you helped us define the guiding principles for budget development decisions back in January. And then also, you help us monitor and provide feedback for questions and conversations depending on the topic. You help us engage with the community and help answer, you know, I know that some of you get questions in the grocery store or whatever, and you help be that beacon of communication for us about, around the budget for that. And then ultimately, you do approve the budget in August. And then just kind of an overview again, we've got the community budget activities coming up. So that budget interactive tool on June twenty-eighth, the public presentation, which will also be that recorded presentation on June twenty-eighth, and then the formal but public hearings, July fourteenth, August. And then I just wanted to share this, too. These are just the guiding principles that you did approve. And these were brought up at all of the budget development workshops that the superintendent and his cabinet worked through when there were decisions that need to be made. These were always first and foremost of our conversations. Any questions?
No. Well, so anybody have any questions? All right. Well, listen, Kristen, again, thank you. This is, it seems like the budget, even though it's, we're in a two-year cycle, it seems like it's a never-ending up in the air, especially because of COVID. And I want to commend you and the staff in the financial department for keeping us on point and actually whole and in meeting all of our financial obligations. So thank you very much for reporting back to us.
See you in a few weeks. Okay, thanks.
All right, item seven point three, graduations.
Madam President, Board of Directors, graduation season is upon us. Excuse me. As you can see, starting tomorrow, with our community-based transition program, and we just wanted to take a moment to pause to let everyone know, these are the dates. They've been published. They're not changing. We want to remind folks that they are in the Tacoma Dome, minus the community-based transition program, which is over at the PDC. We're excited. It's been a year that we will want to celebrate with our students. For all of our students out there, I know you're really excited. We need you to hang on. We need you to hang on, take a deep breath, bring some good, respectful closure to this year for yourselves, finish those last assignments. And if you're not a senior, this is also the time to celebrate. You've been through a lot. We're excited for you. So we're asking everyone, take a moment to celebrate. Take a moment to be, if you're a staff member, know that you've made a tremendous impact. If you're a parent, you have done an amazing job in a very difficult situation, and we recognize that. And then, like I said, if you're a student, this is really close. You're almost there. Finish strong. And we're inviting folks to either watch online or come in in person and see and celebrate with us if you feel safe and comfortable. So just wanted to make sure that everyone had those dates once again. And so we look forward to seeing all of our smiling seniors. It won't matter if it rains or winds or blows. We will have a ceremony.
Yeah, we learned that last year.
Yes.
Anyway, so great. Well, that's fantastic. Thank you so much, Superintendent. It's going to be nice to have some normalcy in terms of graduation. And I hear proms have been happening too. So I think this year it's sort of a sigh of relief for the seniors to have some of these traditional transitional programs back. So thank you.
And if you're right at the finish line, seniors, it's not too late. Just keep on grinding. Just remember, it's never too late. Every one of you has a chance to get across that finish line.
And ask for help if you, if you need it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Ask for help. We're here for you. Thank you.
Super. All right. Item eight, staff report to the board. There is none this evening. Item nine is members of the board, public wishing to speak to address the board. We have alternative options on how to do that. The school board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. However, the superintendent or a designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send in an email to the board@tacomaktwelve.wa.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. The first option is an in-person open meeting, where the general counsel will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. So, General Counsel, do we have anyone signed up to speak tonight?
Yes, we have a one speaker, Montana Diaz, on students' rights and policy.
All right. Ms. Diaz? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Superintendent. I'm just here as a father. My son goes to Fosset. He's in second grade. I noticed there were some problems. Some emails that came up with his instructor, his teacher, about recess time was taken away from him about two weeks. We were, you know, going back and forth on emails, trying to figure out, you know, what's the problem. I noticed, you know, there's a little bit of gray area with the communication and transparency with, you know, teachers. And I know we've been going through a lot. Don't get me wrong. I appreciate the teachers and all what they're doing for their students, for sure, definitely. Just the one thing was, my son would come home, wouldn't feel kind of, you know, the Tacomas go by like, you know, the green zone, the red zone, the yellow zone. My son would come back, you know, he's like, I'm in the red zone. I'm like, why? What are you doing? He's like, I'm not going to recess, Dad, you know, for two weeks. I'm sitting on a bench, you know, kind of isolated. And so I emailed the teacher back, and just kind of want to bring up a general awareness, you know, for kids. They shouldn't be isolated. There should be some, some kind of communication, you know, with their parents, if it's an email, a phone call, or maybe a note, or, you know, back to the backpack. I just, I feel really strong about this, you know, how many other parents can't come up here and speak on that? I guess it's just, it brings awareness. I think I emailed a bunch of you guys already and the superintendent about this, is neglecting, you know, students, especially at a young age, you know, in the time that we're going in right now. It's just, it's critical to try to, you know, communicate with our students' parents, try to get, you know, we try to get them there safely, try to get them back, return safe home and everything. I think this is just a huge, kind of like a mental health awareness. You know, we celebrate it once a month. I think it could go a little bit more, especially with what's going on, you know, in schools during the pandemic too, as well. I don't know what, what the result could be. I just want to bring an awareness to you guys as a parent. I do see a lot of change in that, in isolating the student. And it's, I feel like it's a little bit wrong. Maybe we can do something. So with the gray area, I know it's a policy. I know it's there. I know the state of Washington, the teachers do have the right to do that. But it just, it's a little bit more transparency and a little bit better communication would go a long way.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Superintendent Garcia, would you have some?
Dr. Nolan, would you do me a quick favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz, for coming. Anyone else?
There are no further verbal comments this evening.
All right, the second option is written comments. And do we have any written comments for the, tonight?
No written comments this evening.
So thank you very much. That ends the public comment section. Onto item not ten, the consent agenda.
I moved to adopt the consent agenda.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. Does anyone want to make any comments on the consent agenda, any items pulled or not? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes five zero. Item eleven. Policy matters, eleven point one, second reading of revised regulation fourteen hundred R, Meeting Conduct Order of Business and Quorum.
The district's general counsel recommends that the board adopt the revised proposal of Regulation fourteen hundred R.
I moved to adopt eleven point one.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anyone have any questions or comments to make on this regulation? Okay. All those in, oh, okay. It's a regulation, but it's not a policy. So do we need to do a voice vote?
I recommend a voice vote pursuant to your policy that says that when it's a regulation that's about board governance in the one thousand series, that it does come to the board.
Okay, so we're going to, General Counsel, would you mind reading the rule?
President Bonbright?
Yes, aye.
Vice President Keating?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
Director Strozier?
Aye.
And Director McElroy?
Aye.
The regulation passes five zero.
Great, okay. Great, okay. Item eleven point two, second reading of policy fourteen thirty, public comment.
The district's general counsel recommends that the board adopt the revised proposal of policy fourteen thirty.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the last one.
I move to adopt.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Aye.
General Counsel, would you like to remind folks what this is about?
Yes, the legislature recently revised the Open Public Meetings Act, and they incorporated some of the things that we learned during COVID. And so we've revised this policy to reflect our practice of providing for verbal in person comment at all of our regular business meetings. We've also revised the policy to allow for the written comment that we started during COVID. So that will stay as part of your regular board practice in allowing people with another alternative to have their voices heard. And so we've also updated the policy that no longer would we provide accommodations just for people with disabilities, but for any reason that makes creates an obstacle or a barrier for them coming in person if they want to be able to give verbal public comment.
Great, thank you. And again, this has gone through the process that we we usually use, starting with whoever feels like, in this case, would have been you, who would have felt like this was a change that was needed in the superintendent and cabinet and principals and the whole like, and then through the equity policy review team, our community folks that dedicate a lot of time to going through our policies and helping make sure that they're equitable and and clear. So anyone have any other comments or questions about this one? All right, hearing none, we will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes, never mind, we have to call the roll.
You're you're just fine.
That's a policy, right?
Yeah, you're just fine. We only we only do a, it's a roll call, President Bombright, if you would like to have a roll call vote. It's on particular matter matters such as a resolution, so on policy.
But since we did it for the one before, which was just a regulation, shouldn't we do it for adoption of a new policy?
Like to, we can.
Let's go ahead and do it. It's consistent. We usually do. So let's be consistent.
All right, roll call vote for policy fourteen thirty, President Bombright.
Aye.
Vice President Keating?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
Director Stroger?
Aye.
And Director McElroy?
Aye.
The policy passes five zero.
Thank you. All right, item number twelve, financial report. The district's next quarterly financial report is planned for August twenty twenty two. Monthly financial statements can be found at the district's website at www.tacomaschools.org forward slash departments forward slash business and finance. Item thirteen, curriculum and instruction, thirteen point one, approval to purchase secondary musical instruments for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Evening.
Good evening.
I need glasses to see these. All right, the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of secondary musical instruments from multiple vendors in the amount of one million five hundred and ninety three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Funding source Esser and Curriculum and Instruction.
I move to adopt thirteen point one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anyone have any questions or comments on this one?
I'm grateful for these opportunities. I was a student who had to pay for my own instrument. So I had to like pick up odd jobs and stuff in fifth and sixth grade. So it's really wonderful that Tacoma continues to supply our students with instruments so that in secondary school they can have opportunities.
Thank you. Music is so important. All right, thank you.
Comment?
Oh, yes, go ahead. Director Leon?
So it also looks like there's an expansion of instrument numbers in here, right? Which so, so it's not just important for the the love of the arts, but I think a lot of folks probably know this, but it's important. It also helps music. Reading music helps math and science skills in addition to your emotional health. So thank you for pushing this for our students.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the item passes five zero. Item number thirteen point two, approval to purchase i Ready K five math curriculum materials for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Madam President, I apologize. I should have done this before. I don't know if everyone has had a chance to meet Ms. Larson, who is a longtime employee with the Tacoma Public Schools. So Mr. Admin is still our Assistant Superintendent in there. But Ms. Larson is now the Director of Curriculum and Instruction at the Tacoma Public Schools. She has been a principal in numerous schools. So I just wanted to thank her for being here and build that brief connection. So I apologize, the last agenda item, I didn't do that.
Okay, if I had known I was doing this tonight, I would have like wore a cuter outfit, but it's okay. All right, the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase and delivery of i Ready math curricular materials before the opening of the twenty two, twenty three school year in the amount of six hundred and forty thousand five hundred and five dollars. Funding source C and I basic education funds.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item thirteen point two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We pass this five zero. Item thirteen point three, approval to purchase springboard curriculum materials for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase and delivery of springboard curricular materials before the opening of the twenty two, twenty three school year in the amount of two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. Funding source C and I basic education fund.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt thirteen point three.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Larson. Welcome to your role.
Oh, yes.
And thanks for all the work you've done all these years for Tacoma Public Schools. All right, item fourteen, Business Matters, fourteen point one, approval of contract number T S D dash twenty one dash zero one eight between Maxim Healthcare and Tacoma Public Schools from September first, twenty twenty two to August thirty first, twenty twenty three.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number T S D dash two one dash zero one eight between Maxim Healthcare and the Tacoma Public Schools from September first, twenty twenty two through August thirty first, twenty twenty three. Funding source Student Services.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point one.
And do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded twice. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this item? Director Leon?
Just to probably to clarify, this, the behavioral technicians and the nurses, is this more of a for temp temporary help? Or is this law, this is a permanent staff member at Tacoma Public Schools?
It has the potential to be both. And so we have a great relationship with Maxim Healthcare. They help us out when we can't find staff members to take on full time roles. And so and sometimes they are temporary, and sometimes they make it through the whole year in there. So it is a little bit of both.
Good, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Fourteen point two, approval of contract number T S D dash twenty two dash one three seven between Auburn School District and Tacoma Public Schools from September first, twenty twenty two to August thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Bless. The superintendent, on behalf of the super or Executive Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve contract number T S D dash two two dash one three seven between Auburn School District and the Tacoma Public Schools from September first, twenty twenty two through August thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Do you have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions on this one?
No, but I appreciate our dedication to our special education services here in Tacoma, and I'm grateful to serve in this capacity with a school district that really cares. So I'm grateful for the opportunity and thanks for bringing this up.
Okay, any any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Fourteen point three, approval of acceptance of school supplies donations from Office Depot Start Proud Program for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Title One LAP, recommends the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the donation of school supplies from Office Depot valued at a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for distribution in the twenty two, twenty three school year. Funding source Office Depot Start Proud Program.
I move to adopt item fourteen point three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to thank Mr. Taj Jensen. Taj has done a phenomenal job and and Office Depot. This is a not something that happens in every community. It is a national wide. And Office Depot continues to invest in the Tacoma Public Schools, and a large portion of that is because Taj has demonstrated, excuse me, that will use the resources in an effective and efficient manner to meet their needs. So I want to thank Office Depot and Mr. Jensen.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from anyone on the board? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes five zero. Fourteen point four, approval of purchase order for laptop computers from Computer Discount Warehouse Government, G C D W G.
Yes, the Director of Deployment, on behalf of the Chief Information Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of laptop computers from C D W G in the amount of thirty million eighty seven thousand five hundred and twenty seven dollars. Funding source Technology Levy.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point four.
Second.
Okay, moved and double seconded. Any questions on this one? It's pretty straightforward.
Madam President, I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Teresa Brady. Many of folks may not know Ms. Brady and what she does. Ms. Brady leads a team of folks. In the crisis of getting laptops, Ms. Brady helped us build that plan and execute that plan. That was not an easy plan. And sometimes you see unsung heroes. Ms. Brady is one of those folks that works very quietly behind the scenes to ensure that every kid has access. It's not oftentimes a popular job. It doesn't come often with congratulations and thank yous. But on behalf of the entire staff, I want to thank Ms. Brady for her work that she's been doing. And this is another execution of, it's not going to end because we're back in school. We're changed, and we will continue to find ways to bridge and eliminate those equity barriers for our kids. So thank you, Ms. Brady.
Thank you.
And on behalf of this Board of Directors, I'd like to echo our thanks and job well done. And I know it's a tireless job and without much recognition, but we would not be as successful as we are with our online program if it weren't for you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Now I forget if it's been moved and seconded.
Double seconded.
Double seconded. Oh, should have remembered that.
Theme tonight.
There is a theme. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Thank you. Fourteen five, fourteen point five, approval of purchase order for deployment services for computing equipment from for synchronous technologies.
The Director of Deployment, on behalf of the Chief Information Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of services for computing equipment from in deployment services for computing equipment from synchronous technologies in the amount of two million six hundred and eight thousand dollars. The funding source is Technology Levy.
And do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point four.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Awesome. It's been moved and seconded. I just have a quick question. Maybe you can explain what all that means. What are we? What are we buying?
We, well, the services layer of these deployments is a vendor who helps us with the receipt of the equipment, the storage of the equipment while we schedule out its deployment, the recuperation of the existing equipment that needs to go to state surplus and aid in processing at all levels.
Perfect. Thank you. That that makes it more sense. Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Approval of fourteen point six, approval of for purchase order for mobile interactive displays from Computer Discount Warehouse Government, G C D W G.
The Director of Deployment, on behalf of the Chief Information Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of mobile interactive displays from C D W G in the amount of one million eight hundred and seventy two thousand and eighty two dollars. The funding source is Technology Levy.
Okay, and do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point six.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns about this item?
I just think making a statement on it, just, I feel like sometimes when people listen in on meetings, they're like, wow, that's a lot of money. But thinking about just on the ground level and like put it in layman's terms, like we are a one to one district. All of our students have laptops and computers and like, that's pretty much what we're talking about here. This money is to ensure that we maintain our status as one to one. Maybe not this one specifically, but all the ones that she's been talking about. And I just think it's really important to like kind of put things in lay terms for everybody who listens in. Like, why are we, why are we spending so much money? Why do we have so much money? It's to ensure that all students have laptops and technology services in their schools and at home.
Yeah, not just the equipment, but the software and the supports.
All the things.
All of those takes. So any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Item fourteen point seven, approval of purchase order for installation services for mobile interactive displays from synchronous technologies.
The Director of Deployment, on behalf of the Chief Information Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of installation services for mobile interactive technology displays from synchronous synchronous technologies in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Funding source Technology Levy.
Any comments or questions? Oh, wait, no, first, any motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point seven.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this one? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Fourteen point eight, approval of guaranteed maximum price G M P Amendment Two to contract number T S D dash twenty one dash zero nine one between Tacoma School District Number Ten and Corusmo Construction for the Synthetic Fields Upgrade Bundle Project. Good evening, Morris. How are you?
Good. The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve G M P Amendment Number Two, which includes the installation of lighting assemblies at Lincoln High School, Stadium High School, and Mount Home High School. Chief Chief Operation Officer also recommends that the Board authorize the superintendent or designee to sign said G M P Amendment Number One in the amount of nine million eight hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and eighty three dollars, excluding sales tax. Funding source is Capital Capital Bond Project approved by voters on February eleventh, twenty twenty.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point eight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions for Morris about this item? Yep, Director Leon?
Just are these replacement of lights? Are these new lights for new fields?
These are replacements of the of the of the main stadium lights.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, yeah, and any other questions? All right, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. Fourteen point nine, approval of the guaranteed maximum price G M P Amendment Number One to contract number T S D dash twenty two dash oh four oh one between Tacoma Public Schools District Number Ten and Forma Construction for the Pools Upgrade Project.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction, on behalf of the Chief Operation Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors approve G M P Amendment Number One, which states a guaranteed maximum price for scope of work at Stadium and Silas High School. The Chief Operation Officer also recommends that the Board authorize the superintendent or designee to sign said G M P Amendment Number One in the amount of two million four hundred thirteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars, excluding sales tax. Funding source Capital Bond, Capital Bond, yeah, sorry. Capital project bonds as approved by voters on February eleventh, twenty twenty.
Do you have a motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen point nine.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions on this one? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes five zero. And the last item is fourteen ten dot fourteen point ten, approval to award the bid number B two two zero three four F to Dickson Company for demolition of the pool building and West Wing, includes which includes the library and classrooms in the Galt Building.
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction for the Chief Operation Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to award the bid to Dixon Company for the demolition of the pool building and West Wing, including library and classrooms in the Galt Building. The total award, four hundred and forty eight thousand twenty two dollars, excluding self sales tax. Funding source, twenty twenty capital bond.
Motion?
I move to adopt item fourteen ten.
It's been moved.
Second.
Second.
And seconded. Um, anyone have any questions for Morris on this one? Okay, we had an update from uh already from Alicia Lovar earlier about this, so it's familiar to us all. Um, all right, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? It passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Morris, for all your work.
Thank you, sir.
All right, other business fifteen. We haven't done this evening. So we're on to uh sixteen Board Comments and Reports. And it's sad, we don't have our student reps to turn to, but we just know they're getting ready for graduation, so that there's some of them anyway. So that's exciting. All right, uh, who gets to go first? Oh, Director McElroy has got her hand up.
I'll go first, um, because it is graduation season and uh Josh, you wrapped the last meeting and Tasia gave a really strong argument about looking at our policies about what students can and cannot wear during graduation. I believe as we move forward on anti-racist policy, we must also see how that impacts students on their daily basis and how we celebrate culture. We celebrate culture in our classrooms, but I just think um for a lot of students, their high school graduation will be the only time that a lot of people walk across the stage. That's just statistical data across America. So because of that, I think revising and looking at that policy sometime before I'm off of this board would be amazing. And Tasia was really good, like watch it back, because she did a really good job. And that's my only comment. And also looking forward to the summer. That's it.
Okay. Director Stroger?
This is my favorite time of year. Um, we get to celebrate our young people for their their uh all the time that they spend in the classroom. They get to walk across the stage. Uh, this time not in the rain, this time not on a computer screen, but back in the Tacoma Dome. Uh, it's gonna be extremely exciting. So I just wanna, as I always do, I say always, this is my second time. As I said last year, extremely proud of our our young people who are uh gonna be walking across the stage, excited to celebrate them. Um, yeah, just really looking forward to that. Tomorrow, we have J Mac.
Yes, we do.
I'll be there. Um, looking forward to uh gathering with our partners and and discussing the topic at hand, but uh that means at the next board meeting, I will have a J Mac report. So just be ready.
And and be ready because we uh being featured to Tacoma Public Schools is talking about our apprenticeships and our C T E programs. So you'll have a lot to say next month.
Maybe. Just kidding.
All right, um, Director Leon?
Um, so just to remind the public about Tacoma Flex, which is a program that was, has been discussed here at previous board meetings. Um, it is a program uh uh around allowing uh high school age students to uh come uh at second period, so later in the day, and then they would take that other class that they would be not taking at that first period hour asynchronously. Late, it could be in the evening hours at a time that's good for them. Uh, the goal around this is around um letting kids in that age group get that uh more sleep in the morning, which has been proven uh to help them uh with academics and with emotional health. So I just want to remind folks to, if you think this is a uh a program that could fit your child, uh please uh talk to your counselors at your schools, at your high schools. There will be or soon will be something on the websites at each high school. And maybe a superintendent can comment on this after me. Um, uh, in a way to get information about this, uh, and you can, there'll be a list of classes you can take. Uh, so please look at that as much as you can and see if it fits, uh, because it is uh asynchronous online learning. It may not fit every kid's learning style, so it's important to just see if your child could learn that way and if they would benefit from that uh additional sleep in the morning. Thanks. Now, and one other thing would be, just to add on, this 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 is a wonderful time of year for graduation before the Superintendent makes comment. If he wants to, um, but we've mentioned this many times, but this, you know, as this pandemic has gone on, this class is probably the most affected time wise, the number of hours that they've had to deal with, an alternate way to learn. So uh, the previous classes um also were affected, but this one probably the most number of hours. So the resilience uh in this class has been uh amazing. So I've met and a lot of the students uh and and the parents and the staff have worked so hard. So congratulations to all of you.
Well said. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo Director Leon's uh comments. Uh, and Director Leon has been great. He's been working behind the scenes with us to say, so what does it look like from a community perspective? So on every high school's front webpage, there is a little tile and the tiles section, and it has a little Tacoma Flex, and you can click on that. And you can get uh consistent uh information across all the schools. So it's in there. And now there's a new fillable form. So before we're uh, we'd have you go and contact someone and then you'd have to get the form that's now been brought up to there. And so Dr. Hostetter and Mr. Kulos has been taking some of that and helping that. And then under the Career and College Specialists uh or Career and College page, uh, so the website's constantly getting revised and updated. That's where Tacoma Flex will also consistently live year after year. And so on the right hand side of the column, uh, there's a space there. And so as Director Leon has mentioned, it's a great way for families to make a decision about what's best for their families. And so thank you for your help and your feedback in there, but I just want to let folks know that is live. It is up on the website. Um, I verified today myself just to make sure and uh so on each school's there. And if you need any help, please reach out to your counseling uh staff. It is new for us. Um, it's a new option, and so um be patient, but we're gonna be committed to helping reach those families that want to access that choice.
So so question Superintendent, um, it's it's not just you can come, you can come in later, you can come in second. You can also leave earlier and do that class online. Is that correct? It's at both ends of the day?
Yes, there is options for those, knowing that families have different needs and different approaches. And it's not a requirement. Once again, it is not a requirement for anyone, but if a family wants to access that for a variety of reasons, and it is a family choice, right? And so it's not up to an individual student. We do need our families to weigh into that. Uh, and so they have to engage in that conversation.
Thanks for that clarification. All right, Vice President Keating.
Um, I don't have a whole lot. I'm very excited for the community transition um graduation tomorrow. Um, uh, F R I, the Federal Relations Network, um, I'm a coordinator for, and we're on pause until early August. Um, and so a lot of that has to do with just the federal um delegation not um being in session um or doing the kind of work that they do um often in July, um, in August. And then WASDA is, has shifted to twice a month for the time being as um throughout the summer. And I believe once we get closer to General Assembly at Annual Conference, we'll kick back, kick back into once a week. Um, so things are slowing down a little bit on that end, which um I'm not sad about. Um, and I will leave the fun event that we got to do on Saturday to President Bombright. Um, and yeah, that's it.
Okay, well, thank you, but you're you're cutting short some of the things you can, you went, we saw it, you saw you at, but all I'll tell them about them.
I can't track.
Anyway, so the first one was communities and school. They had a um, which is very important to our s- our district. We had uh um, actually, uh Director Stroger and Director Keating both were at that uh event with me. And we sat at different tables. Um, and um, it was, it was fabulous. It was a fundraiser for this really amazing uh community service that this group does to to really provide um holistic uh s- s- you know, wraparound services for our kids at at six schools, I think it's six, in in Tacoma Public Schools to, you know, what, you know, whatever they need, whether it's um, you know, clothing or uh tutoring help or food, or these, these kids are getting wrapped with love um, and other pieces of to help them get maybe um good students. Uh, so that was a great event. And then um uh Vice President Keating alluded to the Saturday event, which was, it was uh an honor to be able to go and to speak and on behalf of Tacoma Public Schools um at the reopening of Owens Beach, which um unbelievably, it was raining before and it was raining after, but the time we were there, it was absolutely stunningly gorgeous day. And if you haven't been out to Owens Beach to see what it looks like now, it is pretty amazing. Um, uh, this is a joint effort of partnership. Like so everything we do in Tacoma, pretty much. Um, and the school district was a big player in that and with Metro Parks and um and they there, they have, we have built um an an interactive classroom right there on the beach. It is a s- it is spectacular. It's two walls and the other four wa- the other two walls are glass. And so it's wonderful. And so now when we have it's for the students at Sammy for their use, but it's also for our, all of our schools. So if someone wants to take a a field trip to one of the schools wants to take a class to Owen Beach uh to do some science um practice, they'll have a classroom to do it in too. So it's pretty exciting. So if you haven't been out there, take a look. Uh, they also built a playground off the beach um that is also fabulous. And the kids were having so much fun that were there. So that was great. Um, thirdly, about the WASDA webinars that are now only twice a month. Um, this one, today's, was really interesting, and I did send, look in your email, I sent you all a copy of the um the basically the tool that they've put together on budgeting and um bargaining and our roles as board members across the state. Um, you know, what is our role? What is the superintendent's role? How does this, how do we play to, how nice together and with community? Anyway, it's um, uh, it's, it looks excellent. So I sent it to all of you, so you have some professional development sitting in your inbox. Um. Um, the fourth thing um was today was the avid end of the year celebration, and um it was held at Mount Tohoma. Um, I was unable to get there, but I know that that what it is, for those that don't know, this was the the kind of won't say graduation, but the promotion event, celebration event of eighth graders who are going into ninth grade in their program where um with the avid program and it uh from there in every school throughout our system. So that was a big celebration. Um, and then, of course, I just wanted to reiterate the graduation, the piece on graduation, and and just to make sure that it's because it's in the Tacoma Dome. Um, you know, at this point, I don't believe we have a limit on tickets. Is that correct? Students can have?
There is guidance at each of the schools.
Cause some of them are bigger than others. Cause some of them are bigger than others, but just to make sure that you, you know, it, this is an opportunity, and I want to reiterate what um Director Stroger was saying. I mean, first, it is so important for these, for families to watch their their young students, uh, young adults graduate. And it's a moment that you will remember forever. And so I encourage you to check in with your school and see if there's space available, but certainly um, you know, it's time for grandparents and aunts and uncles and friends and cousins and whomever, but um it is a time to celebrate. So uh, and this year we have that opportunity because we're back at the Tacoma Dome. So please take advantage of it. Um. And I believe the next thing on the agenda is um the dates for the next board meetings. We have, we will be here June twenty third um at six P M for a business meeting and again in July fourteenth for a business meeting. I will point out that um in the summer months, July and August, we only meet once. So we'll meet the second um Thursday of July and the second Thursday of August, which I believe is August eleventh, and those are the only meetings, one each month. So just so people have that on their calendars. All right, so that is, does anyone have anything else for the good of the order? All right. Well, with that, I officially adjourn this meeting and wish everybody happy graduation and have a fabulous weekend.
Thank you.
Go, Abe's.